All right, welcome everyone to the March eighteenth, two thousand fourteen Shakopee City Council Meeting. Call the meeting order at seven oh three. Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Mayor Tabke.
Here. We all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three is service plaques for city boards and commissions. We've got quite a few people here tonight that we'd like to thank for your service on boards and commissions through the past, and we've got plaques for everyone who is here this evening. The rest of them will get sent out. But if we could have everybody who's here for a plaque just come up in this area, and then as Mark reads everybody's name, I'll give you the plaque and shake your hand and take pictures and all that fun stuff.
If we can do a group picture at the end, that would be wonderful.
And a group picture at the end. So everybody who's here for boards and commissions plaques, come on up, especially you, Pat.
We have two from the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. First is Sonia Bersich, and she's been on since two thousand five. Second is Martin Thurber. Martin has served since two thousand eleven. From the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment and Appeals, we have Ryan Megan, and Ryan has served since two thousand two. We have two from the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission. The first is Patricia Kunin Court, and she's served since two thousand twelve. And Patricia Pluman, who has served since two thousand five. Next, we move to the Transit Advisory Commission. The first is Rob Litzenberger. Rob has served since two thousand eleven, and Mark Reimler, who has served since two thousand thirteen. And certainly the commission which gets the best attendance award tonight, Terrence Brandon, who has served since two thousand ten. Michael Gunchen, who has served since two thousand two. Mark Heligas, who has served since two thousand four. Jay Lyle, who has served since two thousand twelve. And Suresh Nair, who has served since two thousand twelve.
Oh, you need to get in the middle, Mayor.
All right, folks will need to come around the middle.
Yep.
Sonia and Marty, come over here.
I can get Mark Reimler on this side and... I can't see him. All right, there we go. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and for all your services to the city. We hope to be able to utilize your extraordinary talents on other things as we move into the future. So thank you very much. All right, we move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections this evening?
Nothing from staff.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Councilor Mokel. Do we have a second?
Second.
Sent by Councilor Whiting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Move on to consent business, and I need to grab... Thank you.
Here, they sent me two of them. How much I got yours?
Ah, there we go. All right, item number five, consent business. Anything to adjust or remove from consent this evening? Council Whiting?
Five F five.
Five F five. All right. Anything else?
Seth?
You did five.
Five, did you want to do a three?
Five F five, he did.
Yeah. Five F three.
Five F three and five F five, okay. Anything else? Council Lehman?
Move the consent agenda as modified.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Sent by Councilor Mokel, Mr. McNeil, could you please read the consent business?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Five A one authorizes conveyance of deed regarding South Park View First Edition. Five C one adopts resolution seventy-four twenty-nine, accepting a bid from Hesleton Construction, Inc. in the amount of three hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the East Shakopee Industrial Sewer Improvement Project. Project number twenty thirteen dash four, and approves a five percent contingency for use by the city engineer, and also approves change order number one, the amount of sixty-eight thousand, six hundred seventy dollars for this project. Five C two authorized the appropriate city officials to execute a pipeline crossing agreement with the Inter Pacific Railroad. Five C three adopts resolution seventy-four twenty-one, restricting parking on County Road seventy-nine and Verling Drive during construction of the mini roundabout intersection improvements. Five C four adopts resolution seventy-four twenty-eight, accepting work on the two thousand thirteen Batumans overlay project number two thousand thirteen dash two. Five C five adopts resolution seventy-four thirty and seventy-four thirty-one, making changes to the city's designation of its municipal state aid street system. Five D one approves of position descriptions for accounting manager, graduate engineer, and engineering technician. Five D two adopts resolution seventy-four twenty-six, adopting a revised two thousand fourteen pay plan for certain non-union employees of the city of Shakopee. Five D three adopts resolution seventy-four thirty-seven, declaring the fire marshal to be a dual-position firefighter for para pension purposes. Five E one declares the stadium scoreboard at Schlepper Stadium and Stadium seating and three elliptical exercise machines from the community center to be surplus property and authorizes proper disposal or sale of these items. Five F one approves payments and bills and electronic transfers in the amount of one million, three hundred twenty-five thousand, twenty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Five F two approves minutes of the February eighteenth and March fourth, two thousand fourteen city council meetings. Five F three was removed from consent agenda. Five F four adopts resolution seventy-four thirty-three, accepting the state revise of statutes designation concerning state law allowing for revision to Valley Fair's on-sale alcohol license. Five F five was removed from consent agenda. Five F six approves the application grants a temporary on-sale liquor license to Minnesota Farm Winery Association for an April twenty-six, two thousand fourteen event at Canterbury Park located eleven hundred Canterbury Road. And finally, five F seven adopts resolution seventy-four thirty-six, supporting a job creation fund application to be submitted to the Department of Energy and Economic Development in connection with Rosemont, Inc.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Anyone out there who'd like to speak about an item that is not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing no one, we are going to move on to item number seven A, imposed penalty for tobacco violations. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing, please. Council Lehman?
Motion to open a public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Mokel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Ms. Linehan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight on agenda, action item seven A is the imposing the penalty for a tobacco violation. Just a little history. This violation is to Riverside Liquor, which failed a compliance check. I'm sorry, I'm on the tobacco violation. This is the Riverside Liquor for a tobacco violation. This is a failed compliance check that goes back to August fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. This is the first violation in three years, as indicated in the memo you've been provided. What this provides for is a five hundred dollar fee and a one-day license suspension. They have been requested to sign a waiver and admissions of violation, which the group has done. This acknowledges the receipt of the waiver, and we have that signed waiver in hand. And what council is asked to approve tonight is the receipt of the waiver and admission of violation from Riverside Liquor. This is at five oh seven East First Avenue for sale of tobacco to a minor, which imposes a penalty for the first violation in the amount of five hundred dollars and a one-day license suspension, provided that the one-day suspension will be suspended for one year on the condition that both the licensee and their employees have no further incidents of furnishing, selling, or attempting to sell tobacco or related devices to a minor. Is there any questions from the council?
Any questions? All right, seeing none, anyone in the audience who'd like to speak about this item? This is a public hearing. All right, seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Council Whiting?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Council Lehman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Council Lehman?
Make a motion acknowledging receipt of the waiver and admission of violation from Riverside Liquor, Inc., five oh seven East First Avenue, sale of tobacco to a minor, first violation, with a penalty of five hundred dollar fine and one-day license suspension. The one-day license suspension is suspended for a year, contingent on no other incidences.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Sent by Councilor Luce. Does that hit all the notes we needed to?
That fits it perfectly, thank you.
Perfect. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number seven B, imposed penalty for liquor violations. Entertain a motion to... Open a public hearing, sorry. Council Whiting?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Mokel, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Ms. Linehan?
And again, similar to the last action, what you have before you tonight is imposing penalty for liquor violations. This is a situation in which five liquor violations were issued. This goes back to a March... Excuse me. This goes back to the date of an August eighth, two thousand thirteen compliance check. Similar to the previous action, you're dealing with five entities that include Chaska Market LLC doing business as Los Rancho's Plaza, Holiday Station Stores doing business as Holiday Station Store number two fifty, Knights of Columbus Home Association, Inc. doing business as Knights Event Center, Poe eighty-three, Inc., and Sam's West, Inc. doing business as Sam's Club. And what we have before you tonight is, again, a similar situation. We have signed waivers and acknowledgement of admission of violation from all five entities. Tonight, council is asked to acknowledge the receipt of the waiver and admission of violation from the five entities. This requires, on a first violation for all five groups, they have a amount of a thousand dollar fine and a suspension of the license for one day, and suspend five hundred of the one thousand dollar fine for a one-day suspension for one year on the condition that the licensees have no further incidents of furnishing or selling alcoholic beverages to a minor during that one-year period.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Council Lehman?
What is Poe eighty-three, Inc.?
Poe eighty-three, Inc. is if you go out by where the Culvers is. There's a strip mall behind the Super America. It's a restaurant back there.
Okay.
Phenomenal food.
You gotta go there.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? All right, this is a public hearing, so we will entertain... Anyone like to speak with regard to the public hearing this evening? All right, no one for the public hearing. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Council Whiting?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second? Sent by Councilor Luce. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Council Lehman?
Accept receipt and the waiver of admission of violation from Chaska Market LLC, DBA, Los Rancho's Plaza, Holiday Station Store, Inc., DBA Holiday Station Store two fifty, Knights of Columbus Home Association, Inc., DBA Knights Event Center, Poe eighty-three, Inc., and Sam's West, Inc., DBA Sam's Club for the sale of alcohol to a minor, impose a penalty for the first violation in the amount of one thousand dollars and a suspension of liquor license for one day, suspending five hundred dollars of the fine and one-day suspension for one year on the condition that the license have no further incidents of furnishing or selling alcoholic beverages to minors during that one-year period.
Thank you very much. Sir, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Sent by Councilor Mokel.
Wow. Let you jump in on that one.
Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight, business removed from consent agenda discussed at this time. We'll start with F...
Three.
Four F three, five F three, and Councilor Luce pulled that one off. Councilor Luce?
My only question is, I'm just hoping that this new equipment's not going to... Or is going to make less likely that we have the problems we had the last council meeting, where part of the video was down for quite a while, for a day, and needed to be put back up. Hopefully, this stuff will make it easier for the technicians.
All right, Ms. Wilson, could you give us a little intro as to what this item is, and then...
I sure can, Mr. Mayor and council members. Unfortunately, it's unrelated to the issue that we had two weeks ago. We did have a technical problem with this opening of the city council meeting two weeks ago. We do believe we have addressed that situation, and the entire meeting was captured to video. So while it did not air live, if you've caught any of the replays on our government access channel or tuned in to our website to watch it on demand, you do find the entire duration of the meeting. This purchase that is requested tonight is for computer and hardware equipment that actually allows us to make videos outside of this room. So, for example, staff is currently working on a short video on the upcoming transition to single-sort recycling, kind of a public service announcement informational video type thing. So this is equipment that's not directly related to live broadcast from this room, but rather to creating and editing video productions for airing on the channel when there isn't a live meeting going on in this room, and we have all those other hours of the day that we can use to communicate with our residents.
Council Lehman?
So the videos that we're producing are used how? Are we then putting them on the website or putting them on government access channel?
Both.
Okay.
Council Whiting?
So this money came from PEG fees.
Correct.
And that stands for public and educational and government, and that's the money we take from everybody's cable bill to pay for the public channel number fifteen, educational fourteen, and governmental channels?
Correct.
But we don't run a public access channel anymore?
Correct.
Do we do an educational?
The school district operates the educational.
Okay. So we're taking a fee for some things that we don't actually use it for from the cable subscribers. So since Mr. Luce took this off consent, I just had to point that out, that we're taking a fee from somebody, we're not using it for what was intended for, and that still bothers me.
Councilmember Whiting, I would respectfully disagree. I mean, it's for three... It's for public educational and government access channel. There's no requirement in our franchise agreement that we somehow split it exactly three ways, simply that it goes to purchase equipment necessary to operate access channels, and it is being used solely for the access channels. We happen at this time to only be operating two access channels, a government and an educational, but this money is being used solely for equipment purchases to support those two channels. It's not being used for anything else.
So when we closed the editing studio, we had all this equipment at one time. Did we sell all that equipment?
We sold some equipment. This equipment that is being... That we're looking at replacing or requesting to replace is used by John Peterson, our telecommunications coordinator, for production of videos in-house, and the equipment that we're replacing, he still has. It's on his desk. He was using it today. It's just very outdated. He told me today that he was rebooting on an average of once per hour trying to produce this garbage video on single-sort recycling. It's just... It's old, and in computer technology terms, it's very old.
And as well, since we... Since Council Whiting wrote that up with government access channel, can people... If other people have informational items that they want to put on and things like that, we can still put that on, correct? Are we still doing that?
No, we broadcast solely governmental information and programming. So meetings occurring in this room, city council, all of our advisory boards and commissions, we receive on DVD meetings of Shakopee Public Utilities, Scott County Board of Commissioners, as well as, I think, another board that the county has, but it's all government-produced materials. It's not citizen-prepared.
Like the election debates and things like that were on there too, and that kind of stuff. Okay.
Yes.
Council Lehman?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but over the years, I think the other part of this, not just the PEG fees are really the small portion of this. The bigger portion is the cost that they donate to have the bandwidth for them three channels, and then the equipment that allows us to put our information on it and broadcast it out.
Our franchise agreement with Comcast says they will give us three channels, the bandwidth, the three channels to operate on. Yes. They do not give us any equipment. That's what this money is used for, is to buy the equipment either the city needs or the school district needs to then operate those channels and take advantage of that.
Right, but it's for them channels. So if we didn't have them channels...
Then we would not collect this PEG fee.
And we wouldn't have the ability to broadcast what the government's doing for the people.
Not on television. We could conceivably still broadcast on our website.
All right, any further questions on this item? Do we have a motion? You pull it off. You get to make the motion if you want.
Yeah. Make a motion to accept five F three and pay for the equipment that's necessary, and that's it.
I'll second with a friendly amendment, if I may.
Council Lehman, yeah?
Authorize expenditure of up to twelve thousand fifty-five dollars from the PEG fund to purchase video editing hardware and software as recommended by staff.
Any discussion on that item? Council Whiting?
It's just twelve thousand dollars we're spending, you know, on equipment that we've recently sold, that we could have used. I think we sold some of it anyway, and I'm not so sure that we couldn't spend more money or less money to have the equipment we have repaired, so I will be voting against this.
Council Lehman?
I'd point out in technology, we've seen how the old analog has changed to a lot of digital, and look at the monitors in front of us that worked here just a couple of years ago, and some of the digital voice instead of analog. So what we're really doing is updating outdated equipment, and when equipment gets eight, ten years old, it's outdated.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Council Whiting in dissent. All right, Council Whiting, five F three, please.
Yep, five F three.
F four, five, sorry. We'll get there. Five F five. There we go.
Nothing against this proposal here in front of us, five F five. I do want to talk a little bit about the liquor license, which we approved in five F four, and we're approving the on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Valley Fair in this one, but this is the one that had the sale to minors last year, and we discussed it at the time, so when this comes up... we discussed it at the time, so when this comes up again, if it were to come up again as, and we hope it doesn't, that they'd serve to minors, if that ever came up, um, that first violation would not be part of this new license, so they'd be back for a first violation. So at this time, I would like to direct staff to review city code provision and make a recommendation regarding subsequent violations by the same licensee.
Okay.
Um, just one correction, I believe that was two years ago that they had the violation.
Yeah, the violation occurred two years ago, but last year was when we, we worked through the, the work. Um, Council Lehman?
The question I have is, um, putting the past aside, but moving forward, if, uh, if there's a violation anywhere on site, is the whole site then under the same, uh, penalty of the code? See nods, yes.
Lynn Anne, could you come up and answer that for us?
Mayor and council, yes, Mr. Councilmember Lehman, that is correct. Uh, the gentlemen are representatives from Magnum Valley Fair are here this evening. We have discussed this, we've had meetings, this is an issue that we have brought forward. Everyone who's in party to this liquor license and the request for going from four beer and one on sale to one liquor license, all parties aware.
So that's my motion on the floor, to direct staff to...
Okay, oh, you made that in the form of motion, okay, so we need a second for that motion, I apologize.
Could you reiterate that please?
Uh, direct staff to review city code provision and make a recommendation regarding subsequent violations by the same licensee.
Do I have a second? Senator Lieutenant Luze, discussion, Council Lehman?
We already have a code for that currently.
Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, the, uh, the question I think that Councilmember Whiting has brought up is, is, um, uh, there is a code provision, obviously, that counts as a second violation, but the question is, does it apply, uh, in a situation where a licensee has, let's say, two different licenses, and they get a, a violation in one and then a, not a violation in another one later on, and I think what I understand the direction to be is, is to come back with a code amendment that would clarify the city code, uh, that would meet, that would, that would say that, uh, that, um, incident, that, that event does constitute a second violation, it does not need to be at the same premises, and that, that's what I understand the direction to be.
So basically, if, uh, put it in different terms, if a, a bar, for example, had multiple licenses for, a license for outdoor sales, if they had, for whatever reason, they had one entity outdoor sales, one entity indoor sales, that if, uh, something happened outdoor, it was for the entire entity itself, is that what?
Right.
We're getting at, that it would be, um, for that group? Is there a way that we can get at that easily?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think the policy decision for the council to decide, either now, if you put on this motion or we come back with a code amendment, is, is it the council's intent to hold licensees responsible for a second violation even if it occurs at a different location than the first violation? And that's what this code amendment would do.
Okay. So yeah, we're, discussion to, uh, look into that, that's where our motion is, correct? Yes, Council Luze?
I believe that what, what you're getting at is, their old license numbers are being dropped, they're going under a new license number, correct?
That, that's correct.
And the argument could be made in court that the new license is a different number than the violation license.
That's correct, that's one thing this amendment would get at.
Okay. Alright, any further discussion on this item? For staff to look into, Council Whiting's concerned, do we have a second? Do we have a second, sorry, discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, passes unanimously, thank you, Council Lehman.
I'll make a motion to approve the on-sale and Sunday on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Valley Fair and condition that inspections are performed and approved.
Second.
Senator Lieutenant Mogul, any discussion? Council Lehman?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out to the Valley Fair representative that, uh, over the years that they have been here, their track record has been pretty stellar, so we appreciate that.
I'll reiterate that, it's nothing against Valley Fair in any way, just the policy, so thank you.
Did you guys have anything you wanted to say back there? Alright, thanks, sorry, I didn't even see you sitting back there, sorry, um, alright, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, entertain a motion to recess for economic development authority meeting.
I'll make a motion to recess for the economic development authority meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Senator Lieutenant Luze, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, President Lehman?
We'll call, uh, economic development authority meeting to order, please make note of the role.
Yes, Mr. President.
Everybody should have an agenda in front of them, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Whiting?
A motion to approve the agenda.
And a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, second by Mr. Luze, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, consent items, EDA bill list, um, minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mogul, second by Tapkey, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. For A, approval of resolution number two fourteen dash two, authorizing and establishment of a policy and procedure for tax increment financing. Samantha DiMaggio.
Hello, good evening, Mr. President and members of the EDAC, or EDA, excuse me, I used to be in my EDAC. When I started with the city of Shakopee almost a year ago, we were having a lot of activity with TIF and tax abatement, and one of the things that I was hearing from members of the public and, and all of you, was that you would like to see a policy for tax abatement and tax increment financing. So I do apologize for the delay, but eleven months later, ten and a half months later, I now have a policy drafted. So before we go over the policy, I do have a brief description of what TIF is, and, um, I can go over that just to make sure that everybody understands. And I'm actually, I'd like to thank the House for doing this research and creating this form, I could try to recreate something myself, but I think that they did a great job, so I thought we would just use what they had already created. It talks about what is tax increment financing. Tax increment financing follows the but-for test. Basically, if someone were to come to you and ask you for tax increment financing, they would need to tell you that they would not do this project but for getting tax increment financing. How the tax increment financing would work is that they would tell you, I'm going to build a new building on this property. My taxes, the level that they're at right now, when I get done with this building, there's gonna be a new value. They're gonna capture the increment that was gained from what it initially was on the raw land to what it is now with the building completed. That increment that's captured can be used to make improvements. Often these improvements, people would use it to pay for the land or the site preparation, so we would hear that they're gonna put in roads or public water, public sewer, things like that. There are different districts that get created, some of them are a housing district, we actually have that here, Trident was a housing district. We also have Sandmar, which is a manufacturing district. Based on what type of district it is, there's different durations for how long you can be in the program. So when we look at economic development, that is what Sandmar was. So their TIF increment was captured over an eight-year period, and that's what was given back to them. When we look at housing TIF, that can go up to twenty-five years for their TIF district. Do you have any questions about how TIF works?
Should I, question?
Question?
No, sorry, I was just looking at the renewal and renovation part of that, and, uh, um, would that be something we could use for redevelopment in the downtown area?
One thing that's get, gets a little bit tricky when you look at a blighted area is you would need someone to come in and designate that as a slum and blight area. I think that we could potentially look at some redevelopment TIF for the downtown area, I definitely think that could be looked at, but then you'd have to, we'd have to question is, how much is the increment gonna be from the value of those properties now and the value after we do the public improvements? If the public improvements that you wanna make, if there's not enough to capture the difference, that's where things can be a little bit tough.
Questions? I have, I have a couple questions.
Sure, do you wanna start with the policy or do, do you have questions about how it works?
Um, we can go into policy, that's fine.
Okay, so the policy that I've created for you tonight, I wish that I could tell you that this was all my genius, unfortunately, it is not. This is something that is used by many, many cities across the state of Minnesota. Someone was ingenious years ago and created it, and everybody else was smart enough to follow it. So I did highlight some things, though, that could potentially be changed. As you can see, I wanted to highlight, under the policy purpose, the but-for. This truly is a but-for test, they would need to tell you, we would not do this project but for getting this assistance. So if they've already started to buy equipment, if they've already purchased the land, that makes their but-for test a little bit harder. They could maybe say, I wouldn't build my building as big but for your assistance. That's something that you will have to decide when the time comes on how you feel about the but-for test and how far along in the process that they are. The next thing that I highlighted in this one actually goes to page three. Project qualifications. So there were some things that I added in here that other cities had, some of them that I saw varied in size. This one that I liked, and the EDAC actually made this recommendation, is that the new construction must be at least a fifty thousand square foot building. I drove around town today and tried to find some buildings that I could tell you were fifty thousand square feet, unfortunately, when I went to Scott County, it did not actually tell me how big the size of the buildings were, so I struck out, I apologize in advance for that, I thought for sure I could tell you, you know, a Michael's is fifty thousand square feet, unfortunately, I could not figure that out. But that is a number that could waive, I did see some at a hundred thousand square feet, I saw some at seventy-five thousand square feet, that's a number that is up to you and something that you would wanna change. Under B, it talks about fifteen thousand per job, so I actually created a chart to show you what that would look like. So here is Sandmar. They should've gotten an eight-year TIF, their increment was two million dollars. Sandmar promised to create a hundred and fifty jobs, so the actual cost per job was twenty thousand dollars. If you would've gone with at least fifteen thousand per job, they would at least have have created a hundred and thirty-three jobs, so that was pretty close to that number. I think one thing that's important to remember about TIF, and this is a huge difference between TIF and tax abatement, if you were to decide to do a TIF district, you would automatically include the school district and the county. So this is something that, as you look at these deals, you're definitely gonna wanna be more stringent upon something that you would give tax increment to. You would wanna make sure that your value of your jobs would be lower, that you're not overpaying for those jobs, and you'd wanna make sure that's the type of company that you want to give that, if you're gonna wipe out the three taxing districts, it's definitely something that you're gonna wanna make sure that is the kinda business that you would like to see. When I discussed this with legal counsel earlier today, we talked about the cities already has a business subsidy policy, and our business subsidy policy, we, that's where the fourteen fifty per hour comes from, the two-hundred percent of minimum wage comes from there. And so I had a question from someone earlier today, why don't you include the fourteen fifty in here? As you look through the policy, it does refer to business subsidy policy. When I spoke with legal counsel, they did say that we don't have to have numerous policies, we could just use our business subsidy policy, it's up to you if you want to have additional policies. So this policy, we could create some of the things that you like in here and add it to our business subsidy policy and just have one policy, and make every, every incentive that you give throughout the city has to meet certain criteria and call that business subsidy. That's up to you, I just wanted to share this with you, if it's something you like, we could go forward with it, if it's something that you want more time to think about or want me to research more, I can gladly do that. As I said, much of this policy actually goes back to what the law states, which is almost what our business subsidy policy does, it does the same thing, I think I left a copy for each of you up there. Business subsidy policy basically reiterates what the state's business subsidy law says you have to do.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so this would run concurrent with the business subsidy policy?
It would.
Or we could put it together?
Or you could put it together, one thing that I did ask legal counsel is, should we combine abatement with TIF with business subsidy policy? They did not suggest that we do that, because of the different laws that go in and the different time periods, I'm sure that's why people separate them. You know, they wanna make sure that you know that TIF can only go for a certain amount of times.
Well, I recognize that having two policies can be more cumbersome, but it also may be alright to keep them separate for different reasons.
And one thing that I did, that I did recommend to the person who called with their concerns is that we could make sure on our tax increment page that we have our policy there, and we could even add at the bottom of our policy what our business subsidy policy says, so they would just have to look at one document and see both things, or we could have links for both of them, that's up to you. I did bring the business subsidy policy as well because the last time that was updated was twenty-twelve, and I've had requests from the EDAC that we revise that policy or review that policy, and that these policies are looked at every two years. So we'll, we'll be bringing the business subsidy policy back to the EDAC. Some things that I noticed right away, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at your policies, is right now, if you're gonna apply for tax increment or tax abatement, you would need to pay a twelve thousand dollar fee, and that would cover Springstead, that would cover Kennedy and Graven, any outside consulting services that we would need to pay for. In our business subsidy policy, it says six thousand dollars, so we need to update that. That's kind of one thing that, you know, that we have that could be an issue, is having different policies. We may, it may be in our best interest in, when we update the policy, to say that that fee is whatever it says in the fee schedule, instead of putting that fee, because that way, we keep current, if something gets changed, we don't miss it.
I think so.
I would suggest that the, the amount per hour be a per, the percent of federal minimum wage or poverty or however it's worded, uh, federal minimum wage, because, and you could carry that into business subsidy policy, you could put it in the TIF documents, you could put it in the abatement documents, and then it, it could, it would change based on what the actual minimum wage is. If they change it, it's still a percentage, so you don't have to change it unless you're changing a percentage, then everything would be the same.
And I think how it says now is, it basically says you have to follow this policy plus everything in our business subsidy policy, and so in the business subsidy policy is where we address the two-hundred percent.
Yep.
So I, I did add, when the person called me earlier today, I said, we could also put these on our application to be very clear and say, if you're applying for TIF, please remember that not only does Shakopee follow the state of Minnesota laws, but we also have extra criteria which include the following.
What I'm saying is if our business subsidy policy says two-hundred percent and our TIF policy says fourteen fifty, why don't we just make the TIF policy say two-hundred percent?
Does the TIF policy say fourteen fifty?
No.
I think it just refers to the business subsidy policy.
Says it in notes.
Does it say it, I'm sorry?
It's in a, yeah, it's in a, and you know, it's not actually in the resolution.
Okay, okay, so that's, that's where, you know, that's something that we would want to go hand in hand, is whatever our, whatever this policy, whatever the tax, tax increment policy says, it does say in here that you have to follow, um, if you look at number five, the first bullet, it says... Yep, five A, right down here, it says, developers' businesses must also comply with the business, with the business subsidy policy for the city.
And then I, I didn't know, I didn't read anywhere in here whether the, the fourteen fifty, it referred to as two-hundred percent of federal minimum wage was inclusive or not of benefits.
And that's in our business subsidy policy as well, and so in our business subsidy policy, and I apologize for the people at home, hopefully you can see it okay, in our business subsidy policy under C wages, it says two-hundred percent of federal minimum wage exclusive of benefits.
So without benefits?
Right, yep, excluding benefits.
Okay.
So that, right now, would be fourteen fifty, and that's something that, I think, depending on what happens with the minimum wage laws, that's something that we'll also wanna take into consideration, which I think is good that we review these policies on a more timely basis and make sure that we really are up to date. And as, as land in the city of Shakopee, you know, narrows down, these may be things that you're gonna wanna tighten some of the things in this policy. You may wanna say, well, you know, we now want that instead of fifteen thousand per job, we want it to be five thousand dollars per job, we wanna see more, more jobs for the amount of money that we give you, those are things that are up to you to decide.
And you're under housing for twenty-five years of TIF, low, assist low and moderate income housing. Multiple questions for you.
Yep.
If the city sells bonds, revenue or general obligation bonds to fund part of this, part of that, or to carry the cost until the TIF is actually generated, um, does the city recapture its interest that it pays on them bonds?
On the bonds? I don't think that the city's ever sold, have, I believe it's always been pay-as-you-go I don't think that the city's ever sold, I believe it's always been pay-as-you-go TIF, so I don't think that they've ever issued bonds, but they may have done that before my time. I'm unsure.
Mr. President, you are correct, Samantha. We, at times in the past, we did sell bonds, but since at least the mid-nineties, I can't recall a bond that's been sold that's dependent upon revenues coming in. So it would be the risk that the developer is taking. If they don't pay their taxes, the bonds don't get repaid. That's against them.
Okay, but this is, this policy and the instruction that from staff specifically talks about the city selling bonds for the purpose of carrying that cost until a TIF is generated to pay back the bonds. So if we're putting that into a policy, the policy should probably say who's paying that interest.
And I think that would be
It could come out of the TIF as long as it's recognized somewhere. And the reason I bring it up is because when we do a road reconstruction project and we carry that cost, the bonds we sell to do the road project, and then we assess some of the homeowners that are benefited, they are paying the interest for carrying that cost. And it's only fair that part of the TIF generated or something is paying for that interest cost to carry that.
Mr. President, that's typically the way that it's structured. I mean, you can negotiate that, but it's typically going to be the project that's going to carry the, and I forget what the term is for the unrealized or the interest that's accruing during the time before the first payments are made from tax receipts. But that's something that we can be aware of.
Well, the property owner that's getting their road redone isn't able to negotiate whether they're going to pay the interest or not. So I'm trying to treat the taxpayer equally to the TIF recipient.
We understand.
Inside here on page two, I did say that this will be pay-as-you-go TIF and that they could ask you for an exception. So they could ask for bonds or something else. But typically, we should do pay-as-you-go TIF. Because we want to make sure that the project is getting done the way that we want to see it done. And at the rate of the bonds, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that could happen with TIF where we could put up the money and they say they're going to do something, and we sell the bonds, and then the project never happens, and that puts a ton of risk on the city. So my recommendation to you would be to do pay-as-you-go bonds. They could always ask you. But in here, it says that council really, at the end of the day, has the right to approve or deny anything based on whatever you want to do or however you want to do it.
And my last question that I have was the somewhere in here I read that we want to make sure that there's not a cost for additional services. And typically, if you do subsidize housing, there is a higher city service load, police calls and them types of things. densities are higher. How do we how do we fit that into a policy that says the opposite of the reality?
I don't know if that's something, and maybe Mr. Thompson, you can talk to that. I don't know if that's really something that we can add to the policy because unfortunately, I think that's why TIF is set up this way, is to help to create that low to moderate income housing. And so
So it's basically set up to create a situation where the city's service levels have to be increased at the expense of the rest of the taxpayers?
If I could just clarify, I guess what your question is, for example, if we offer abatement to a company moving to town and we have to build a new ball field, we have to buy a new fire truck. Is that what you're asking?
Nope. No, I was specifically talking about the housing.
The housing TIF.
Low income and subsidized housing.
So if we then have to develop a park to service that?
No, I'm talking about the additional police calls that we tend to see from a higher density housing, multi-housing. Matter of fact, we went to crime-free multi-housing because we had such a high call load to their locations that we decided that we were going to move to this program to try to work with these properties to lower their call load. So it's not a new idea. It's actually an old idea. So I'm building off of that old idea and moving it forward into what could happen and trying to figure out how we collect the cost of them additional city services, not on the backs of those not receiving the subsidy.
I don't agree with what you just said with regard to why we went to the crime-free program because the, all the low income and the apartment buildings, they had gone to that program voluntarily by working with the police department and getting to that point, and it was extraordinarily successful. And a big part of the reason why we went to a citywide for all dwellings was that a lot of that crime had moved toward the single families and those types of things. And so I think, in my opinion, that having these types of projects, yes, they obviously take policing, they obviously take different needs for a city for sure, but by having low income and affordable housing initiatives, it will, in the long run, decrease and reduce our need for police load because it will take and embrace a big need that's in the community and not have it all. It will give us the opportunity to work directly with those folks and is a way to get at that problem instead of causing a bigger problem.
Actually, let's just take facts. If you take an apartment building with seventy tenants in it and you take a neighborhood block with ten houses on it, seventy people generate more police services than ten. It's just a numbers fact, regardless of income. So the bottom line is, the higher density is higher call load. Not based on good or bad people, based on numbers, just sheer numbers. So you're going to create, if you have higher density housing, you're going to create a higher level of services required. Nothing to do with the demographics of the people. It has to do with the number of people.
Okay, I'll give you that completely, but that's not how you introduced what you're talking about. You were talking about low income.
I put low income in because typically standardized plat coming through here is not asking for TIF.
Mr. Chair. I think this is just a an option for us for housing. It's not saying we're going to automatically agree to it. It's, somebody may come with a project that we see as valuable. Like with the TriStar, I think it was. I always mix those two up. The senior housing where we felt that we wanted to have low-income senior housing with that kind of care that was involved with that. So this is not saying we're automatically going to do this for multi-housing or things like that. It's just an option in this policy. So I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to nip some of the issues that are going to come forward prior to that.
But we still have to vote on it and agree to it.
And understand that they still have to pay a fee as well.
But that fee is not going to pay the ongoing cost. So.
Another question. This encompasses both the TIF and the tax abatement one for you, Sam. But how does all this fit into the larger scheme of what we're trying to do? These are a couple of different pieces of the overriding process that we're trying to put together and that kind of thing. How does this all fit together and how does it flow from one to the next project there?
Sure. I'm glad you asked me that question because I actually have been working diligently on a score sheet. I know that was something else that you had asked for. And so I brought along a copy of where I'm at with the score sheet. And as you can see at the bottom of your policy, when it talks about how you're going to apply, this score sheet would be something that staff would use internally to make a recommendation to you as council on whether or not we think it's a good idea to offer a tax abatement or a tax increment financing. And so this will be used for both, for both programs. And of course, if you're going to apply for tax increment financing, you'll have to have a higher score than you would for the tax abatement because of all three taxing jurisdictions that go into it. But it is my hope that as time goes on, that we can, initially when people come in with their questions or their policies, they can look at our score sheet, they can look at the things that we're looking for. You know, based on our score sheet, this should tell them where our priorities lie as a community. And I think that that should make it very clear to businesses and easier process for them as they come in.
Go ahead.
So with the TIF and the tax abatement policies we've got here, these are basically the floors of where we begin, would begin talking and working with someone for taxing, for incentives, tax incentives specifically, for projects. And the score sheet as we implement that and council gets a call on that, I assume. As we implement that, that'll give us the ranges and that'll give us a lot more clarity as to how positive we think the projects are for the community. Is that accurate?
Definitely. I think one thing that you've also asked for is, and I've been curious myself, and I know that Mr. McNeil has asked me this as well, is when you look at projects that we've done in the community, where would they somewhat rank against each other and where are we at in our economy right now? And would we do those same projects that we did last year, that we did two years ago? And I think as Shakopee is changing and evolving and the workforce is changing, we have different needs. Those are things that we're going to want to look at. So this is kind of an evolving process all the time. But I think it's good to let people know that we're very serious about who we offer incentives to, that we have policies that go along with them, we have score sheets that go along with them, and that when I come to you, I'm prepared to give you the best information that I can.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead. Regarding the score sheet, on the policy for TIF under six B, it says city staff reviews the application and completes the project score sheet. Should we be having these numbers from your score sheet in our policy? Or is this going to be something that we're going to massage and maneuver as time goes by?
I thought about that. I thought about having a number of what the best score is, but I think one thing that could change is right now, we keep talking about the number of jobs. It's very important to our community that we're creating lots of different numbers of jobs. Maybe down the road, it would change as our land availability becomes different. Maybe something that, and I was something I was actually going to add to the score sheet is looking at the density. If we have a company that comes to the city and says, I need two hundred acres of your best land, and I'm going to give you five hundred jobs. When you look at two hundred acres and five hundred jobs, where would that come into play? I know we look at Shutterfly. They're going to give us three hundred and twenty-nine full-time permanent jobs on twenty-two acres. So I think that's something as land changes and we have less land, you're going to want to take that into consideration. Do you want to give up two hundred acres? Would that be something that you would want to incentivize? It could happen anyway. They could come and they could do it on their own anyway. But it's up to you to decide, is that something that we want to incentivize or would we prefer to try to incentivize three different businesses to each take a smaller chunk but to create more jobs? I think as times change, the score sheet could definitely change. And so I've kind of tried to leave it soft at this point. I do have some numbers. I have scored some of the projects that we've already done. And so that's the last thing I was going to add on here was the density.
Follow-up, please. Is that going to create any legal issues since we're offering a score sheet and we're just alluding to a score sheet here and then we're using it as policy without having it locked and tied together?
Mr. President, members of the EDA, no. Actually, I think it's better not to put the actual, you referenced the score sheet, but this is very much a work in progress, I think, and it could change. You could give, you could find out some of these things are too restrictive or, and you might want to give direction to, you know, tweak the form, tweak the scores. And I think you're better off just leaving it being referenced in the policy but not part of the policy itself to give yourself some more flexibility on it.
Isn't the score sheet kind of like a preliminary? You know, somebody comes in and they go through that process to even see if they're eligible before they get to the next level?
Definitely, Mr. President. That's why I looked at it. So I could come to you and say, you know what? Based on what we've seen, you wouldn't even come into comparison. But I think we have to start somewhere. And definitely, at the end of the day, it is up to all of you and to your constituents whether you want to go forward with projects or not. And so I think it's important to tell someone, you could have a perfect score. You know, at the end of the day, you could have a perfect score. But let's say it's someone who's going to come in and be a competitor for somebody that's been a longstanding business. Let's say we have another molting company that wants to come into town. They want to go right across the road from Rar Molting. We know this could potentially hurt them. Is that something you would want to incentivize? In a lot of programs, that is not something you'd want to incentivize. You don't want to bring in a competitor to someone that you already have. So it's important to let people know, this is just a preliminary score. I agree with you.
Mr. President and members, I think, you know, you need to look at this as guideline. It's nice to have things in writing. It certainly makes Samantha's job much easier when she's dealing with folks who might be serious or maybe tire kickers as far as whether there's incentives that we might want to put out there. But one thing that we have found is we've done research, there's not a lot of cities that have these in writing. I know that a lot of my colleagues are waiting for you to adopt something because they can't wait to see what that can be used like in their community. So it's good to have these, but I think it's still, at the end of the day, it's going to be up to the five of you as to whether it's something that you'll want to be able to offer incentives. Is it what Shakopee is looking for? Is it a good mix for us?
Mr. Tabkey.
I was going to make a motion. Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2014-2, Resolution Authorizing the Establishment of a Policy and Procedures for Tax Increment Financing.
Mr. Whiting.
I will second that.
Discussion. Okay, my concerns are, I'm in favor of actually having these policies, but I think they need to be tweaked a little bit yet. And what my concern is, is I'd like to see, when we talked with the consultants about tax abatement and TIF, it was clear that one of the important things is to make sure that your community is getting something back out of it, okay? You want to attract the best of the best and weed out the not-so-good. And I'm not sure if we're doing that, or it almost looks like we are. You know, if you meet a minimum threshold, you're eligible. That's kind of what the mentality seems like to me. So I'm a little concerned about that. I'd like to make sure we're getting the best of the best and we're only giving incentives to the best of the best. And I want to raise the bar just a little bit. I don't think fourteen fifty an hour is adequate. Especially now that minimum wage has gone up, but I understand ours would go up evenly because it's a percentage.
But that's not this policy.
It is, it's reflected into that policy. It's two-hundred percent of minimum wage.
But that gets addressed when we look at our business subsidy policy.
Right. Well, it says two-hundred percent, so. But I don't think the business subsidy policy then is enough either at this point. So I want to make sure that we're weeding out the lower companies. The other thing I guess that's missing is there's no requirement here in our abatement policy to make sure that there's actually a financial need for assistance. There used to be a requirement by Springsteads for the BUT4 test for abatement as TIF. And now their BUT4 test mythology has changed and it's BUT4, if we don't pay these people, they said they won't come. And that's not a financial need. It's blackmail, basically. And I don't agree to that, so. So I'm in favor of having a policy. I think we're on the right track. I think it could be tweaked a little bit, and I would support it. But until it's, until some of them smaller issues are addressed, I'm not going to support it. I'd like to make sure that we're covering our basis on some of the items that I talked about earlier, too. Mr. Whiting.
I agree with you on asking the companies what more they can bring. I think that's important. And I think maybe we can add something like that to the score sheet. You know, what else you got? What else can you commit to? That's something we can all weigh. I think this is great that we have something we can work with. I think they've done a great job putting this together. There are some concerns, but I think they go back to the business subsidy policy, the score sheet. But as far as this policy goes, I'm happy to be in favor of this.
And I don't think it's dropped dead that this has to be done right now. I think we could make these changes in all of the policies, have everything tidy within the next thirty days. That's my thought. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to comment on what you said. I think this puts this raises the threshold of who can and look at specifically tax increment financing incentives and abatement when we get to that next one. But I think this raises the bar significantly from where it was before, and it's to a level that I am extremely comfortable using as the floor for our TIF. Because, I mean, it puts a couple of key things in here that Sam talked about. It has to be minimum fifty thousand square foot buildings. It has to have fifteen thousand per job for TIF. We won't go any lower than that. So it really puts some, I think, really good restrictions on how it can be used to really show businesses coming here what we believe in and what we want, which is high-wage jobs. And we're not going to pay too much for those high-wage jobs coming to the community as well. It, as the score sheet continues to evolve and come in, that's when I think a lot of the things you're going to, that you're concerned about will be addressed is in the score sheet as to how much TIF we would get, so what percentage is and for how long and all those types of things will be addressed by us as we discuss the scorecard and say, if you get so many points, this is what we'll, we'd be willing to offer you, and this is what range we would do. Because I think the most, the more transparent and the more clear we are as a council as to, this is where we want to go, and these are the types of jobs that we want to get, and this is how we want to get there, the clearer will be to not only staff as to where we're going and what we want to work on, what types of projects we want to do, but also to the real estate and development community as to this is, these are the kind of projects that Shakopee is looking for and they fit in well. And the city of Shakopee will work with us if these are the kinds of projects we bring. So I think that we're, it becomes a lot better for us as a city to get, with the scorecard, score sheet, get that, those projects narrowed in as to dialed in as to exactly what we want to get. And these, I don't want that set in the TIF policy. I want this just to be the basement for where, what we're going to start working on, and the scorecard being the nitty-gritty. And so as we go through a project and learn more about something, we can tweak and adjust that to really meet And so as we go through a project and learn more about something, we can tweak and adjust that um, to really meet our future needs as we continue to go forward. So uh, I just, thanks Sam for all the work on this one, um, and everybody else who's been involved. I think it's a really good, uh, a really good place to work from on TIF incentives.
Ms. Lewis?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Sam also. She uh, explained it to me a few times. We've gone over the scorecard. Um, I think one good item was brought up that whatever, you know, what can you bring other than what's on the scorecard? Should be a big item because who knows what they're gonna bring? And, you know, if we put that on there, it's just extra credit.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, myself. Motion passes four to one. Item four B. Approval of resolution authorizing establishment of policy for tax abatement. Samantha?
Thank you. Before I start, I hope you don't mind if I address a few of the things out of your discussion just now because the E D A C actually had some of the same questions and concerns for me before we were done with the policy. So when we talk about the best of the best, I think it's important to know that it kind of reminds me of a job interview. Someone can look great on paper. They can come in and fill out the application and they can look great. But I think until you actually meet with them, it's very hard to determine who the best of the best is. And really until everything is said and done, it's really hard to find out if that was one of the best of the best deals that we could've done. So I, you know, we tried to figure out how to score it. Basically, we've tried to score it based on the number of jobs, the wages, things that I heard all of you say that you wanted to see and the E D A C wanted to see. But at the end of the day, I can't promise you who will turn out to be the best of the best. We could be surprised. Hopefully, we'll be pleasantly surprised. Um, one of the things that, that President Lehman had brought up was about gap financing. And this is something that will actually come to you very soon. We have some smaller deals going on in town that are looking to the city for gap financing. Gap financing can sometimes be a good thing, sometimes it can be a bad thing. I think it's important to remember that when they're looking for financing, it's because they don't have enough money to cover the deal themselves. That is why there is a gap. So you definitely run a higher risk financing someone who doesn't have enough money to finance the deal. So I think that's something to, you know, to remember. Um, the next thing is, is a question that uh, Member Whiting had about what are you gonna bring to us? And I told the E D A C, this is something that's also very hard to give a score to, but on their application, that is the question that we ask them. What, you know, what other communities are in? What have you done for those communities? Why do you wanna come to our community? What are you gonna do for us? That's all part of the application, so you will be able to see that and that will be something you'll take into consideration. And so I think we can go on to abatement now. Before I start, I wanted to show this to you. This is a list of everyone that we have done tax increment for and tax abatement. Sanmar would be our tax, tax um, increment, so that's why they're in pink. Their total investment was thirty-six million dollars. They got a two million dollar incentive. They created a hundred and fifty jobs and they got twenty thousand per job. If you were to look at our abatement numbers, Emerson is going to invest seventy-two million dollars. Their total incentive through tax abatement was five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I think it's also important to remember that they did get a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar forgivable loan from the revolving loan fund and some MIF investments as well. The total jobs are four hundred. This is what we have them committed to on paper. I think that they've said publicly they will create five hundred or more. But on paper, these is, this is what I have them committed to. The cost per job was one thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. If you look at Data Card, their total investment is ten million dollars. That's after they've bought in the building. This is what they're gonna cost, what their cost of improvements are gonna be, is ten million dollars. They received three hundred and thirty-four thousand from the city of Shakopee. They are going to create at the end of the day, seven hundred and eighty jobs for a cost per job of four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. If you look at Shutterfly, the total investment of that project will be sixty million dollars. Their total incentive from the city is seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand. With the three hundred and twenty-nine permanent full-time jobs, their cost per job is two thousand three hundred. TriStar is coming here from Fairbelt. Their total investment is fifteen million dollars. This is what we have committed on paper. I talked to them the other day. They've already outgrown the building they were gonna build. So this will be exciting at the end of the day to see what we end up with. Their total incentive is about a million dollars. With the eighty jobs, which I think they're actually already at eighty jobs, which will also be exciting. Their total cost per job is thirteen thousand two hundred. So when we talk about doing deals that we wanna use our TIF to do the best of the best, I don't know that our history shows that. If you were to look at our investment of cost per job for Sanmar, it was twenty thousand dollars per job. If you were looking at the best deal we got, it probably was Data Card at four hundred and twenty-nine dollars per job, total. So I think it's important to see these numbers. I don't know if you've ever seen them laid out like that. But I wanted to show those to you. So if you look at our, the total investment over the next five years, it's a hundred and ninety-three million dollars. With the total incentives that we've given out of less than five million dollars and the jobs that we're gonna get is close to fourteen hundred. And I know it's gonna be double or triple that because of the spin-off jobs that'll be created from it. So now we can get into tax abatement. We've been very fortunate here in the city of Shakopee. We'd have a great partner with Scott County. All of the abatements that we have done, Scott County has graciously partnered with us. And so one thing that is in this policy that I'm gonna leave it up to you if you would like to keep it or remove it, is highlighted in here. In here, the language for the but-for test is actually in here. That is up to you if you would like to take it out or not. It's always at council's discretion and it says that council can vary from this policy at any time that you want. So that's up to you. But truly, Minnesota law does not say that there has to be a but-for test. That is up to you. So at any time, you could abate anyone's taxes. And like I said, it's, I'm gonna leave that up to you. I personally think we should leave it in there. I think that why would we subsidize someone who's gonna do it themselves? But at the end of the day, it is truly your choice. The next thing I wanted to point out is that I did highlight down below also in number two, if you wanted to keep that under, take it out, the but-for test. Then if you go on to page three, I highlighted the costs. So I said, if you're a new business coming into town, your total project costs at least have to be ten million dollars. If you're a company that's gonna expand here in the city, if you're gonna build an addition right next door, your total investment has to at least be five million dollars. I did see some numbers that were smaller than that. If you look at our total investment and what everyone did invest, the smallest one that we would've had would have been Data Card and that was a new company. But I think it, in a sad way, I guess, I, I'm not sure if those are good numbers or bad numbers. I wanna make sure that we are growing our own businesses. That's why I did recommend that we use five thousand for expansions of businesses here in the city. But I don't have one currently that we can use as a comparison. I also have for number twelve, at least one job has to be created for every twenty-five thousand that we give out. I did just go over those numbers, but I have them that are specific just for tax abatement. So Emerson at four hundred jobs, with the amount of money that they got, at the end of the day, they would've only had to create twenty-four jobs. They're going to create four to five hundred jobs. With Data Card, they actually had to create thirteen jobs. The city of Shakopee is gonna get six hundred and eighty jobs. Plus the new hundred and twenty that they're gonna create because of the Minnesota Investment Fund. So we'll be up to a minimum of eight hundred jobs in two years. For Shutterfly, it was, would've only been thirty jobs and for TriStar, would've only been forty-two jobs. So I'm not sure if you wanna keep that number at twenty-five thousand or if you wanna tighten that number. That is also up to you. And then once again, I did bring up the score sheet. As I said, if you were coming asking for tax abatement, we would probably be a little bit more generous on the score because we were not including the school district. This would just be the city and potentially the county. Do you have any questions?
Does the uh, can you put your, is it the sheet you just had up?
Yep.
When, when it talked about the uh,
The jobs?
How many jobs that they would be required to have?
Yep.
So we would give a million dollars worth of incentives for forty, forty-two jobs.
Yep.
And,
At twenty-five thousand per job.
Half a million for twenty-four. It, you know, thirteen jobs, I'm wondering, is it, is it almost, is it almost worth even going through the process for so few jobs?
Well, that's what I find interesting is if you think about it, at a minimum, this is what they would have to get. It depends on how much money, you know, it depends if they're gonna build a building that's gonna have a huge increment and they're gonna get to capture that whole increment. That's what they're looking for is, is based on what that change in value is gonna be. So if they buy some land that has an extremely low value right now, so maybe some land that's zoned agriculture that we're gonna rezone to commercial. Between that and the increment of the building, there could be quite an increment that they're gonna get. But at a minimum, we would not pay more than twenty-five thousand per job. Looking at this, that number does seem a little high. I guess that's up to you to decide. Indeed, the most that they would give was sixteen thousand dollars per job.
Is there a, what's the minimum number of jobs they have to create to even be eligible to apply?
We don't have that in our policy and that's something that you're welcome to add. I think what's important to remember is that there is a fee to apply for twelve thousand dollars. Which I think that some of those businesses are gonna have to decide what is the cost benefit? Do I really wanna pay and go through the public hearing and have all my information be public and those type of things for, for what I'm gonna get?
Well, I'm looking at the numbers twenty-four, thirteen, thirty. What was data systems? What was the number that it started out and then it was revised lower?
I think you're thinking of Compass.
Compass, right.
Yep. Compass, I think originally started at forty.
Jobs?
Forty jobs.
Actually, maybe sixty.
Sixty jobs in the beginning, went down to eighteen jobs. And at the end of the day, they did decide not to pursue it. And I think we've learned some things since Compass.
Should, you know, should we have a minimum? It just doesn't seem like you wanna go through the whole process for five or ten jobs, you know? Questions, Mr. Tabkey?
Why do we have uh, this one at twenty-five and TIF at fifteen thousand dollars per job? What's the reasoning for the, the differences between the two?
I believe the E D A C went this route because with tax increment financing, you wipe out all three taxing districts. With this one, it is only the city and potentially the county. So they gave you a little bit more per job. Because your taxes won't be as high, if that makes sense. The amount of increment that you would get, you're gonna get more increment if you do TIF because you're gonna have all three.
School district and this company.
Yep.
Automatically.
Yep.
Does that make it more confusing or is that?
And you know that, if you want, you could keep both at fifteen thousand. Or, you know, we could, we could revisit the TIF policy. We could change that somehow. We are luckily enough gonna go through it one more time and are the city council here shortly, so. Yeah, that's up to you guys to decide. But I think, you know, I definitely think that President Lehman brings up a good point about the number of jobs. And that's always something that we could add to our business subsidy policy and say, no matter what subsidies you're looking for, to come to us for a subsidy, you have to at least create so many jobs. And that might be the place to put it, would be in there. So if you're gonna come for SAC credits, we can say, how many jobs? If you're not gonna at least create twenty jobs or so many jobs per SAC credit or something like that, I think that you'll wanna have some flexibility.
Could, could we make the tax abatement dollar amount the same as the TIF? And then at fifteen, and then if they go to the county for abatement and the county approves that, there would be their additional dollars above and beyond and that would make us consistent.
That makes sense.
I think that, I actually think, when you see these numbers and see what they would need to create, these are very low numbers. And so I don't know that that's really getting at what the whole policy is all about.
Mr. Whiting?
I just wanna add that it, it may not be always about the job, though. It may be something that's um, of so much value that it's gonna bring other business in or create something else. So it's not always about, about the job. Maybe we need a new grocery store or something like that. Or something that just adds so much value to the citizens in town that we really want it there and that maybe it's only five jobs. I'm just saying that that's another way to look at it.
Couldn't we look at that on a per, is, instance? You know, like you say, if it is a grocery store, something we could really use. Um, I could see us, you know, y- you take a look at it, you see the proposal and you see the company. Um, you know what the city's looking for. You could automatically bring it to us and we could just adjust for that.
We can waive it at any time.
Well, similar to the score sheet is that extra. Uh, you know, cause we talked about having that extra thing on the score sheet that would make you bring it, make us bring you in. It could be that.
And I think this is a minimum number, at a minimum. And, you know, I think as to what Member Whiting said, I think that there's a good point. Certainty just did an expansion. They added some new equipment onsite. It was a twenty-five million dollar expansion. They only created four jobs. But if you think about them making that investment into our community, the number of people that came into town to work on that expansion, the money being spent in town because of it, I could see, as you were saying, that there are spin-off associated. It's not always just about the end creation. It's about the whole process and what it will bring to our community in the end.
Didn't we do a s- uh, small abatement for that project?
No.
The uh, stack switching over to fiberglass shingles? Actually, it was a couple of years back, but I think we did.
I was gonna make a motion to approve resolution twenty-fourteen dash three, resolution authorizing the establishment of a policy and procedures for tax abatement.
I'll second.
Motion by Tabkey, second by Moco. Any discussion? At what point do we wanna uh, suggest changes that are consistent with the TIF policy of the fifteen thousand instead of twenty-five and having it more if they are granted the abatement from Scott County?
I would accept an amendment for fifteen thousand for the per-job number.
And I'd second that.
You'd make it the same and then if they wanna, then they know what they're getting from us and anything above and beyond this.
Just say, you know what? If you're gonna get, get something from us, you're, the max we're gonna give you is fifteen thousand per job.
Any discussion?
You hit my point.
Hearing none? So then, when will we see the worksheet coming back to us?
The score sheet?
The score sheet.
And I think, you know, as we talked about, I don't necessarily know if that's something that you're gonna wanna publicly pass. I would think that the next time that we have a project, I'll include that with your packet so that you can see where we're at with that and you can see how it scores and kind of how I evaluated the score sheet. And I don't necessarily know that it's something that you wanna have a public meeting on and, and really make, I think it's something that is a work in process. So when we get done with a deal, you can say to me, you know what, Sam, after we've talked about this, we think next time you should look more at this or give more points in this area because we've done enough this way. I don't know if you'd really wanna pass a resolution to.
I understand that we don't wanna sit here publicly and tell somebody that might be seeking an incentive what they're gonna be graded on ahead of time. I get that. But I think what I'm hearing from this group is that we wanna have the line item on it. So if there's something that's overwhelmingly a benefit to the community that doesn't necessarily meet the job requirements, that somehow it still gets brought forward for a consideration of possible uh, assistance. Is that correct?
Right. I'd agree with that.
And please know that even if they scored zero on the score sheet and they wanted to pay the twelve thousand dollars, I would gladly bring every deal to you. I think that's your job to pick the winners and the losers, not mine. So I will just give you a score and let you see how I scored it and, and how it looks. And, and as I said, that's then up to you to decide case by case. You're gonna wanna look at everything. And I, I, I'd hope that anyone who looks at the score sheet knows that this is not a guarantee. As I said, you can get uh, the maximum on a points. This does not mean that you are guaranteed abatement. It means that I'm gonna make a recommendation to you and you are gonna look at it, but every deal will come to you.
Get the motion out of the way first and then we'll go on. Um, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. Mr. Tabkey?
Um, sorry, could I just get a clarification on the motion? That was an amendment to make it fifteen thousand dollars per job, so the main motion is still unvoted at this point.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, so, I'm sorry, I thought that we had amended the motion.
We passed, we just passed the friendly amendment.
Okay.
So now we're back to the original motion that you made.
Okay. So do I need to restate it or?
So is there any discussion on that original motion? You had your hand up, so I was gonna let you speak in case.
Um, I was going to ask the body what thoughts about that cause there are very few things that Sam and I disagree on. Um, and this is one of those things that we need a little direction from council. Um, as to what everybody thinks, just general ideas. We don't need to talk in-depth about it. Um, and there are definitely pros and cons to both sides of it. Um, and with regard to like the score sheet, I, I would like to get everything out there um, in the public uh, with score sheets. So if there are um, projects that are sitting out there and projects that are available, people could look at Shakopee um, for, uh, that they know, have a very good idea of what they'd be getting if they were to come to Shakopee. Um, based on what, how they would score and how they'd score. On the flip side of that, what it would do, what it would be putting out there very publicly, what we would do um, for a project that would be coming to town. And so it wouldn't be guaranteeing by any means that that's what we'd do, but we'd need to stay consistent with that type of uh, scoring. Mr. McNeil?
Hang on a second. Before, before we get into that discussion, there's a motion and a second on the table that we're gonna, we're gonna finish. And the motion is to accept the uh, resolution twenty-fourteen dash three, authorizing establishing a policy and procedure for tax abatement. We approved the friendly amendment, uh, making a number equal, the same as the TIF. Now we're back to the original motion, which was made by Mr. Tabkey, seconded by Kathy Moco. So is there any discussion on the original? So is there any discussion on the original motion and then we'll, once we're done with this, we'll go back into the discussion that we're having. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, now we're to the discussion that we're having about the, uh, scoring sheet. And do we wanna make that public or do we wanna make it a document to where somebody that's seriously considering doing something and looking for subsidies in Shakopee has to stop in and talk to our staff? Mr. Whiting?
A little clarification if I may, um, they don't have to pay the twelve thousand just to get the score sheet, do they? So they can come in and talk to you, work a score sheet up and, um, see how they do and decide at that point how, how much they wanna pursue it. Um, I can understand where you'd wanna work with a couple of companies and kinda hone it a little bit. So I would be acceptable to ever work on it a little while, maybe go through a couple of companies, maybe even a couple of mock companies. Um, if that's possible.
I think the question is by, uh, Mr. Tabke is, do we wanna make this document just completely public so that anybody, you know, that wants to see what they're gonna be classed on or graded on, considered for subsidies, is available ahead of time without stopping by?
And that would be my concern, that they wouldn't even just stop in and we wouldn't know that they're even interested in Shakopee if we put it out there. Then we don't know that, because it's sort of the out there, they've done the score sheet and they said, nope, we're not. And, and whereas where, I think that if they were to talk to us, they may decide on us versus someone else.
It's true, we may choose that they are a good fit and we, gosh, we really need that or something, so I, I agree with that.
Well, I think we already covered that. Sam said that if they stop in, she'll give them the score sheet, they can work it up. She's already contacted them. I don't think it needs to be out in the public. She, it's public enough with Sam handing it out and, uh, then at least she knows who the people are. Long as she gets, um, a name and that, I, I, we should have some, some parameters before they get the scorecard.
Mr. Tabke?
But on, on the other side of what you just mentioned, Councilor Moco, was that, um, there's a medical device company that, uh, just is building in the North Metro. Um, it is a phenomenal company, lots of jobs. They, it's something that would've fit, no matter what our scorecard is, would've fit very well into what we do for, um, tax incentives and it, uh, would've been something I assume that City Council would support tax incentives for. Um, it was a really quick project, they were going through their process extremely fast. Um, and they ended up going in the North Metro without really talking to us and doing anything with the city of Shakopee. And if this were a carrot that were out there saying, hey, this is something that we could do for you, would that be easy enough for them to look at and draw them into our process to become part of the city and then land here? And I don't know the right answer and I don't want to get to the right answer tonight, I just wanted to get people's feelings as to how, how far we go with this, so I stopped bugging Sam.
Let's, let's start it.
I can understand that and I, I think there's, there could be some ways to capture the data that Ms. Moco's looking for. If we, you know, have them fill out a preliminary form before they can get access to this. So we captured their information, we know who to contact, we can do a follow-up, you know, we can try and sell Shakopee to them. Then I could see getting it out there, but just a blind, you know, putting it out there, then I, I do agree, we could lose some, so.
Kathy?
And just to, um, respond to Mayor Tabke was that, 'cause when I look at a score sheet, say you're scoring low on your cost of your building site, uh, or I'm sorry, high, but you're low on your job numbers, would you then just bypass Shakopee and not fill out the rest of the information? That would be my concern, without speaking to somebody. They would already automatically think, well, I don't fit the scorecard. And so that's where I would be afraid to put this out there because there may be other reasons that we would say yes.
Agree.
My concern is this is a work in document in progress and, uh, I, I, I would really like to see a minimum number of jobs required to be considered for any assistance. Uh, unless it's some great thing that the community is overwhelmingly wanting. Um, second grocery store. Nothing against Cub, but I'm telling you, from what I hear from the folks and you do too, they would probably pass a referendum for that. So, nothing against Cub, it's just, uh, one site doesn't serve seven, thirty-seven thousand people.
So, can I actually, can I, do you mind if I just explain one thing? I took it off of this, but I used to have numbers on here that said, so, for job creation, it had a maximum number that you couldn't get over so many points for each column. And then at the end, it did have a total number. And so my original score sheet said if you didn't at least get between four hundred and five hundred, you weren't considered for anything. And so I actually took that off because I think what you wanna know is where would they potentially score? But I don't necessarily know that it's my job to tell you what incentive you should be giving. So I think we could have a happy medium by saying, you know what? Go ahead, you can score yourself, but at the end of the day, it's up to council to decide where they see you lying. And I can always, you know, based on what our score sheet looks like at that time, I could show you the scores for the projects that we've done if you wanted to somehow rate them. Sad to say, I know companies do that. I know that they look at our prior incentives and they come to us and they say, you know, Sam, I think I'm just as important as a Sandmar and I know what you gave Sandmar and that's what I want you to give. And so I think it would be nice to say, well, on the score sheet, you know, just to have something to at least bounce back to, but at the end of the day, as you said, it's truly up to you. It's up to you at the end of the day, how much you wanna give and if you wanna give any at all. These are just ways to help you to think about and to compare to other projects.
I think it's no different than if you're going to, going to the county seeking some kind of personal assistance. They have requirements, you have to fill out paperwork and make sure you're eligible. Asking the city taxpayers for subsidies, you should have to stop in and fill out paperwork and make sure you're eligible. That's my thought process. So I would be opposed to just throwing it out there, um, but I think our, our policies will be out there. They'll know their, their, where our policies stand. And if they're serious, they can stop by and show us what they're, what they're thinking, what their proposal might be. And, and at that point, you've got an opportunity to see if it's something that we are interested in. Like you, your example, they might want, uh, fifty jobs on two hundred acres and, you know, it's probably not a good investment. Mr. Lewis?
Excuse me. Samantha, how close is the document you just showed us to what you're actually gonna use?
Besides taking off the point value for each one, it's fairly close. The last thing I was gonna add was the density, which was a very, uh, very good suggestion to add that on there because as I said, you know, based on the number of acres, but then, then I got torn is should we look at the total number of acres or should we look at the building size? I guess it was recommended to me that we look at the total number of acres that this property is requesting, which maybe makes more sense. But I think that that's also, that was the very last thing that I was hoping to add, was to give some type of score for that. I wanted to go back and look at the projects we have done, compare their building size and how many workers they added and then assign, assign a point value.
Go ahead.
We already made it public.
But, but it's work in document, it's gonna change. She's gonna add some stuff to it.
For now, we've made it public already.
Well, they don't know if it's gonna be the same thing as when they stop in because she's still working on it, um.
And I think it's important to know that Mr. Thompson has so graciously informed me that as soon as we do, if you do decide to award something, that that would become a public document. But as President Lehman said, next time, we might change it. That's really up to, to all of you to decide.
All right, item number four C.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the commission, as you'll recall, last year when we were having a great deal of activity, we decided to go to, uh, EDA meetings the same evening as the City Council, which meant you met twice per month. We've had, uh, a more manageable pace since then. But you've also adopted in the City Council end of the meetings, um, a workshop format for the first Tuesday of the month and a working session, business meeting, the third Tuesday. So that we don't have to have an EDA meeting along with the workshop setting. What we would suggest is going back to the old method, uh, where you'd have a single EDA meeting on the third Tuesday of the month. If there's a need for an additional one, the President could call for that and we could do that. But otherwise, it would be one less thing that we'd have to address, uh, on the first Tuesday of the month.
Put that in a motion, Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to adopt a schedule to provide for a regularly scheduled EDA meetings to be held on the third Tuesday of the month unless otherwise needed.
Second on that, Mr. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Ms. Moco, go ahead.
Oh, make a, I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, April fifteenth.
And that's seconded by Mr. Tabke?
Yes.
Thanks for that, I was busy.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lehman. We reconvene to Shakopee City Council meeting and we move on to item number, uh.
I'm wondering if I could do those two since they're, uh, the same, so I wish I could go.
Sure. Uh, we're gonna reorder this, uh, agenda real quick and go to item eleven F one, Approval of Resolution Number seventy-four thirty-four. Resolution authorizing the establishment of a policy and procedures for tax increment financing. Um, I don't think we need to approach everything again. Can we just get a motion for this? Council Whiting?
I will offer a motion, uh, to adopt Resolution seventy-three forty-four, Resolution authorizing the establishment of a policy and procedure for tax increment financing.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to amend that to Resolution Number seventy-four thirty-four. He said seventy-three forty-four.
All right, yeah.
Sorry.
Look through the other part of my glasses.
All right, so Councilor Moco, you seconded that?
Yes.
I'll accept that.
All right, um, any discussion on that, Em?
The only question I have is, at what point does any of the concerns that I brought up get incorporated or addressed?
I'm gonna bring back the business subsidy policy to you, so, and I'll also have the final application for you to look at. And I think that will be a great time for you to make sure that the things that you're looking for are truly included.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Um, Approval of Resolution Number seventy-four thirty-five, Resolution authorizing establishment of policy and procedures for tax abatement. Council Lehman?
I'll offer Resolution seventy-four thirty-five, um, authorizing establishment of policy procedures for tax abatement as modified by the Economic Development Authority of the city of Shakopee, namely the fifteen thousand dollars per job instead of twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Senator Moco, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion for recess?
No.
I'll second that.
Of course you can.
I'll second it.
Make a motion.
May I make a motion for a recess?
Anytime you want to. Yes, for how long?
Fifteen?
Let's go five or ten.
Seven, seven.
Seven, do we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
Senator Lehman, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are in recess for seven minutes.
He says no, it's, uh, it'd be a motion of referendum.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That I wanted to see. But they've asked to suspend some of the, our noise requirements that are in section ten point six oh on our city code. And in our city code, we allow operations, construction activities to go from seven AM to ten PM Monday through Friday, nine AM to nine PM Saturdays and Sundays and holidays unless the council gives a suspension of those restrictions. MinDOT, and I just want to kind of just go through on this, on these pictures, the project so you can understand maybe why they want some of the additional time. This is a rendering showing the bridge. And if you look at it real close, there's about eleven piles per pier. In this bridge, there's going to be forty-one piers. And each pier probably goes down about a hundred feet. And it probably takes ten to twenty blows to get those piers into the ground per foot. You're looking at close to five hundred thousand to a million pounding. So, we are requiring them not to do any pile driving in the night. Well, Chanhassen, MinDOT is leaving it up to Chanhassen and the city of Shakopee. Now, in this drawing right here, and I'll have to highlight it here better, this is the county line, right here? So, this portion of the bridge is in Scott County or in the city of Shakopee jurisdiction. Majority of the project is going to be in Carver County, in the city of Chanhassen. The bridge construction is gonna, most of that's going to be happening in, a lot of the work and the grading work, the pier construction is going to be happening in twenty fourteen, carrying on all the way to the end of November. Then the next year, winter, and next year will be the, the superstructure, which will be the, basically, the paving surface of the bridge. Another requirement here, there's a lot of muck excavation that's needed on the Carver County side. We're talking anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five feet deep. And major areas, that operation will have to go twenty-four seven. It's just because of the way it is, you don't want to let that area fill in, leave it open, you want to keep filling as you're digging to stabilize that area. So, this area on the north side here will be a twenty-four seven. The night restrictions that is in your packet talks about times from ten PM to six AM on Monday through Friday. And there's some kind of confusion there, I didn't quite, the person, there was, I invited some people from MinDOT to be here tonight to help explain why they would want to have some additional hours. I think the main reason is, this huge project, we want to get it built and open by November of twenty fifteen, there's going to have to be some extended hours. Obviously, for the muck excavation, but for many of the other activities, building pads for pier construction and those type of things at night, and for paving. The, the seven PM to seven AM on Saturday is kind of confusing. Is that seven PM on Friday to seven AM on Saturday? Or is it, you know, it's, it's kind of backwards. I don't quite understand the Saturday hours, and I couldn't get a clarification for it. So, that's why tonight I would probably not ask you to approve this until I get better clarification from MinDOT, what exactly are you looking for? Also, Chanhassen has not approved these hours, it hasn't been to their council. Their hours, that they have, their regular city hours, is nine AM, or excuse me, seven AM to six PM Monday through Friday, and nine AM to five PM on Saturday. Now, they're also looking at extended hours, but they haven't decided to what extent. Being in the River Valley here, the noise is going to, is going to go out to the various parties. I mean, it's going to go up the valley, it's kind of like the railroad train, it's going to be loud in their depending operation. So, we did require them, at night, you cannot do pile driving, concrete pavement demolition, jackhammering, sawing for pavement, crushing operations, those really loud type of noises. But there will be activity for grading and other things, that that's what they want to do. And if, as I mentioned before, the muck excavation operation will have to be twenty-four seven. Wanted to get some feedback from council, you think, what concerns you might have, I can relay to MinDOT. I want to get some clarification on those hours on Saturday and Sunday. I think we're looking at, we don't want to have any, very little work on Sunday and some restriction on Saturday. But I don't know exactly what that is yet from MinDOT.
Mr. McNeil?
You'll call that, one of the complaints that we had a lot of during the one oh one, the old bridge renovation was from some of the residences that were very close to that and wanted to make sure that there was an opportunity for people to be, to understand that this is something that will be going on. It's obviously a big project, and once it's done, it's going to be, you know, fabulous. But there is some pain during the construction, we want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. But as Bruce indicated, we do have some uncertainties on it, and so therefore, we aren't able to make a recommendation tonight. It's something we need to talk further with MinDOT. And again, if you have any feedback or ideas that we need to be relaying to them or the city of Chanhassen, please let us know tonight.
Councilor Luce?
Bruce, I believe I read something about the backup alarms are going to be softened at night.
Yes, that was, that was mentioned in the allowing for equipment to turn around and little backing up. That's what they have to do.
Councilor Lehman?
The project says, it's, it's advantageous to everybody that this project gets done on a timely fashion. The bids are going to be lower if they can get it done sooner and they can keep on working. Pile driving at three AM probably isn't a good idea.
I think both Chanhassen and us feel that, you know, shock, that's just something that you don't want to have.
No, I'm, but I am willing to allow them to, to work, you know, as much as possible. But the, the real heavy noise things are going to have to be limited, just probably ten to six or something, limited overnight. Is there any possibility we can drown out the train noise with this project?
Time it just right?
You mean, time it?
This could be a, this could be a win-win, you know? Fix one problem and fix another one at the same time here.
Or they can only do pile driving at night while the train whistlers blowing.
It has to be in sync with the train, you know?
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a good project, it's got to get done. You know, I, I'm imagining that the, they're, they're going out to bids, they're putting in deadlines in the contract, and they've got unknowns of soil conditions with possible high water tails and so on and so forth. So, they're kind of in a bind too, and they're just covering themselves, making sure that if they do run across these situations, that they've got their bridges crossed, no pun intended, through us and Scott County and everybody else, that they can make up the time. And, and it's totally understandable, so.
And, and I would say, the reason they want to work from six AM to ten PM with the pile driver, you could, if you look at the hours, that's two, you could have two shifts. You could have one shift, and you keep that pile, I mean, like I said, you, how many piles are there, how many piers? That's a lot of pile driving that's going to have to happen over a year.
You know what, Bruce, and I've noticed over, over the years that the, the pile driving, it's the same technique, but I think the machines aren't as loud. But instead of not being as loud in the machine, you feel it. It's just bump, you can feel a whole ground shake, you know?
It depends how close you are.
Right.
I think, and again, this is a four thousand long bridge, so the further they get away, the less we're going to feel it over here. Most of the, most of the real heavy construction will be on the Carver County side.
Councilor Whiting?
You know, you're right, it's gonna, this is going to take some work, and we all understand that. I, I think that this is far enough away past the, the bridge there, the river bridge, to be all right. And we've spelled out everything in our policy here, that all that night activity with the pile driving and all the noise making won't be happening. So, I think, I think we're good here. I'm sure we'll get complaints, but I think you've covered everything.
Yeah, I just want to get a clarification on Saturday, I don't quite understand the hours on Saturday. But our hours would be nine AM to nine PM that they could work.
There's no houses around, so I don't see it as an issue, it's Saturday and Sunday, they're not going to have the lights in the windows and things like that. And it's just going to be construction noise, and it, and it will carry, I'm sure, but I, I don't see a problem with it out there.
Councilor Luce?
I would suggest that, I believe, the city administrator, McNeil, and Chanhassen city administrator could work out something with ours to bring back to us. A little consensus on their side that'd work out both ways, because it's going to have, we're going to have to have a consensus with both sides. Because it doesn't make any sense for us to let them go till ten, and then they get on that side and they only let them go till eight.
Well, but then if they get done over there at eight, they can come over and work on our side. I mean, the project's got to get done one way or the other.
Right, I'm just saying, you know, the, the sound's going to carry no matter where they're working.
When, Mayor, when does this start?
We're, it'll be going out for bids here pretty soon. And there will be a, I believe, a bid award in May. And we're actually looking at having another open house for people that are interested, particularly businesses and commuters, about the different traffic phasing that'll go on, and the impacts of your commute or the impact of businesses. That'll, I think, that got scheduled today for May twenty-second, and that'll be, that'll be announced soon. So, it'll be starting in June, July, that timeframe is going to get going.
Raises a concern, Mayor, do we have to worry about noises cancelling out the community event at Huber Park during Derby Days? I mean, if they're spending a bunch of money on a band that nobody can hear, is that going to be a problem? Can we slot out them times?
I think it could be something that we could add.
Need to slot out them times so that we don't destroy Derby Days' functions.
Good point. There's also music in the park scheduled too, we may want to think about.
Well, them are, yeah, we could, yeah, we might be able to reschedule some of that stuff if it's a city sponsored thing. Derby Days has only got one location, but.
May, maybe the non-music in the park summer?
Already scheduled, I'm, I'm guessing, yeah.
Right, right, I don't know if we can move it or not, but, or we're going to have to, yeah, we're going to have to do something.
All right, it's always easy.
I think I've got enough direction, what I think we would like to do is go back, meet with Chanhassen, kind of get in sync with everything, clarify a few things with MinDOT, and we can probably bring it back in the next meeting under consent.
What, what is the urgency on this one? I mean, is it?
It would help with the contractor knowing what the, like Mr. Lehman said, that will reflect in the bids, what they know what they can do or what they can't do per city, or what the city's willing to do.
Okay.
So, it does, it does help in the bidding process.
Perfect. Any further questions? Do you need anything else from us then, Bruce?
Do you want a motion?
No, I think we're going to bring it back on April one.
Perfect.
For approval.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, we'll move on, item number twelve, council member reports, we'll start on this end, Councilor Lehman.
No report.
Councilor Mokel?
Last month's chamber meeting, women's event is set for May first, from eleven thirty to three o'clock at the Mystic Lake Casino Hotel. Speakers include Mary Brainard of the CEO of Health Partner, Kristen Brown, author of The Happy Hour Effect, and Teresa Thomas, president of Women in Networking. And then today I had our, my first CBB meeting, and Renaissance Festival talked about having a more family-friendly this fall. They're going to have a fairy tale princess party for the girls and an obstacle course to basically walk the plank for boys. And, and I suppose, you know, not boys, girls, but just both gender specific, not gender specific. They're going to be adding some local breweries, and then they are planning a cancer survivor parade with St. Jude Hospital.
What's CBB?
Chamber and Visitors Bureau.
Just going to make sure that you can turn on the lights.
Sorry. Visitors Bureau. And then they are also planning Shakespeare's Birthday Celebration. River, River Valley Theater Company has their stories under the big top at the high school for five dollars, and I did forget to get the dates on that one. They're also going to be offering a summer camp for five weeks, and then a production at the end called Disney's Little Mermaid Junior. And then they will be in the Derby Days Parade as well in their costumes. And then Valley Fair is adding on to their new picnic area. And then they're also adding the Route, Route seventy-six, and Route seventy-six is also going to be having a food truck as part of their food. And that's going to include the antique autos that they took out before, they're going to be putting them in that with the Scrambler and the Tilt World. They're also going to be adding a Northern Lights area, LED lights to many of the rides are going to be added, sorry, and on the Ferris wheel. And then they took out the IMAX and the Hydro Blaster and still developing that area, they haven't decided what's going to go into that area yet.
The Hydro Blaster? I didn't know that.
I didn't know that was part of it either, so I heard that today, I was like.
Ah, too bad Dave's not still here.
And then they are, in the area that was, they had a food place in that area, they're going to be doing, and I didn't write that down the name of it, but it's a new Philly Cheese Steak Pub area, so, sounds, and sweet potato fries, she was talking about sweet potato fries today, so. And then on June twenty-first, they're going to be having a food truck festival out there, so I thought that was exciting. They're also looking into a beer and wine festival in September. And August twenty-fourth, they're doing a race series from Valley Fair to Huber Park if they get everything figured out, logistics. That's going to include a ten mile, a five K, and a one mile ride, run and ride, which also is included in park admission.
Thank you.
And then at the landing, they are starting their maple syrup season right now with their school days, the last few, two, or the next two weeks, so. And they're going to be doing an art fair, July nineteenth through the twentieth. The farm is expanding with more animals. And then they're also doing the canoe challenge again this year, they had over three hundred people last year, so. And that's it.
Thank you, perfect, thank you, Councilor Luce?
I attended the school board meeting last night, and they had a supper over at Turtles for the new high school principal. Then they went back to the school for the rest of the meeting, and they talked about the vote and what they're going to do for canvassing and other things to work on that project. They gave out some awards for some buildings that are energy efficient, and I'm trying to remember everything, I didn't write it down, I should have. But it was a good meeting, they took it to heart with the vote, and they're going to work hard on the next one.
Thank you, Councilor Whiting?
Last Friday, I attended the scale meeting where I had the honor to be elected the chair of scale. They had a presentation from the Met Council on water, both surface water and groundwater, and the reduction in levels over the past, I think it was fifteen years, from those aquifers, which is interesting. And kind of with the goal in mind, maybe not specifically said, but to kind of rely more on surface water than groundwater and different capacities there. Also, the, the county mentioned on April first, they're having a public hearing regarding their potential transportation tax for the county. So, if anybody's available to go to that meeting on April first. Then, last night, we had the Public Utilities Commission meeting. They did have a small outage in the South Bridge area from one of the construction crews on the PetSmart building. The outage lasted about thirty-six minutes, so they did a great job on getting that power restored. And since there was, nah, they didn't get their locate taken care of, they will be charged for repairing that and getting that back up and running. And some good news, the staff is working on new ideas for notifications, they took that to heart after the last outage. And so they'll be working on that, and I'll be able to report more on that soon.
Councilor Luce?
One thing I forgot to mention, there was three young men from the high school that are going to California for a big science event. It's an all expense paid tour, they won, they won this, and they've got some good ideas, and I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that they are going, and it's a very good thing that, that school did.
Nice.
Question on the transit tax. If the county passes their own transit tax prior to, I know the state legislators are, yeah, state legislators are taking up a bill, but if the county passes their own prior to the state passing one, if they do, but then the state passes one, would the state one apply to Scott County on, above and beyond what Scott County has already adopted? So, could we in theory have two?
Cover that one?
I was going to say, who wants to take that one? Yes, in theory, there could be two, but more than likely, what would happen was that they wouldn't have a sales tax above and beyond the half or penny, whatever the county decides to do for sales. So, if the, what the county's looking at is a half cent sales tax for transportation projects, so if the state were to levy and require the county to go in at a penny sales tax, just for example, only, it would only be a half cent additional onto there, so it would be a one penny total.
So, the county would get to keep their half a cent and, but collect one cent and give a half a cent back to the state?
That is all very much up in the air, but that is the assumption, I, as I understand at this point, is, am I incorrect in anything so far? We, we don't know exactly how that other half cent, as, we don't know anything that happens with the legislature, how that would roll out. So, we don't know anything about how that would all work.
Well, let me ask a question.
You'd be asking the wrong body.
If, if I gave a half a cent to Scott County to spend on roads in Scott County, and I gave a cent to the state to spend on transportation, which would you think would be spent closest to me?
Good question.
Obvious question.
I was going to say, is this a rhetorical question, or are you looking for an answer?
Thinking out loud.
You bring up a good point, and I think you should meet, go to that meeting on April first and express your thoughts, because we do want to keep that in, in town here, if we're going to be paying money to the state, rest assured, we're not going to be collecting back the same amount that we're giving, so.
Typically, that money goes outstate.
All right, a couple of things that I've got, back on February nineteenth, Mr. McNeil and I went, we toured the Emerson Building as it's getting completed, and it's a gorgeous, beautiful building, they're moving in, in April. They're going to have four hundred employees there, is their intent by end of April, May timeframe. Expect to be at five hundred by the end of the year, and then in twenty fifteen, implementing their manufacturing folks. And so it's, they're moving, hiring more people there than we expected them to, and the project is going really well. Like I said, the, the building is gorgeous, and it's moving forward very quickly. Then on the twenty-fifth, I spoke at lunch to Rotary and talked about getting their ideas for goals for the city. And if anybody hasn't heard about it yet, but the city has set up on the website an idea box, a place where council members, anybody can put in ideas that they got for, they have for things that the city can work on and do better, and should be priorities for us as a city. Also, that day, had intergovernmental working group meeting with the SMSC, Prior Lake, Scott County, and ourselves. One of the biggest things we talked about is that we're working with Mystic Lake, Prior Lake, city of Shakopee, through the CBB funds, and then also the major entertainment destinations in our region. So, Valley Fair, Canterbury Park, Renaissance Festival at this point, on creating a branding, overall brand for our area. So, it will be a brand similar to, like, the Dells, or similar to the Ozarks, or whatever overriding brand, North Shore, Bernard Lakes, those types of things, so that we can have a, a destination for our south of the river attractions that people can identify with and say, hey, I'm going to blah, 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 whatever that ends up being. And we all advertise as this and utilize this branding, and it's an extraordinary project. It's really, really good for our area, and so hopefully, that will continue to move forward. And, and their goal is to unveil it this summer, and hopefully have something to start working with, and then grow the program from there if it makes more sense. So, it's a really exciting project that everybody's going through, and.
Who's done that?
That is, we are meeting, it's the city of Prior Lake, Shakopee, the Mystic Lake Chamber is very involved, as well as the major entertainment, so Canterbury, Valley Fair, Renaissance. We as a city haven't put any money into it at all. We have CBB funds that are levied through hotel taxes that all go to the CBB for them to spend it. And so it's, if there's any money that needs to come from the city, it would come from there at this point. And if there's more that would need to come in, that we would need to play a larger role, then it would obviously come through council. But it is everybody working together for a really good product, if it all works out that way. Did you have a question, Mike?
Yeah, in the near future, if, if Matt's not going to accompany you to one of those, if you could give me a heads up, I'd just like to sit in and just see how they work.
Absolutely, the next, I'll let you know when the next one is, it's two months, so it will be April, middle of April, so. There's that, then there's also on that same day, was the state chamber priority sessions dinner. So, Councilor Mokel and I were both there, just listening to the presentation on the state chamber legislative agenda. And I'll skip some of them. Monday on the third, I met with the senior club and went over, discussed different things that the seniors are looking for in the community and things. Senior center was hammered over and over and over. It is a major need of this group, so as we continue to move forward and work on goals, I hope that we will continue to look at that as a, something that we need to do for our community, is having some sort of senior gathering place for our, our residents. Also met with the new president of St. Francis in Carolina, Brad Peace, who is the cap agency chair, president, CEO. And then last Thursday, a really fun thing that I did was, got to go to the CIS Democracy Class and just talk about how government works, and had a really good time there. Then last, I want to say congratulations to the, especially the boys' basketball team. It was, went to all the games except for Saturday, and had a lot of fun going to the games, and it was seriously ticked off. So, if we want to have some sort of resolution regarding that game.
According to ball.
Yeah, exactly, we can change the shot clock whenever it's, can we make a resolution for shot clocks in Shakopee?
I was suggesting that.
Angela, can we do that?
That'd be school board.
I don't know. We can do it within city limits.
Oh, there you go.
All right, so those are the things that I've had going on, is there any other business, item number thirteen, Councilor Luce?
I just wanted to let everyone know that the FRA, which is the Federal Railroad Authority, has granted us a visit from the regional director for next month, which will start the ball rolling somewhat on the railroad situation. I'm optimistic, we'll see once the meeting occurs and where we stand.
All right.
I was going to bring that up too, because the concern I have there is that apparently, they're not allowing the railroad committee to be at, attend that meeting. So, I'm kind of figuring out exactly how that's supposed to work.
This hasn't been working through the city at all, so I don't.
Beats me, I've been talking with Mark, and Mark doesn't know, and so I'm up in the air.
Right, it's something that we've all got to work out as how this whole thing goes. I mean, I think it's a very positive step, but as to how it all works within.
Well, we, we as a body appointed two members to the railroad committee along with Bruce's staff, and we're not following that. So, I, I don't agree with the process at this point, and I don't know that the railroad FRA is dictating to us who we send to these meetings. So, what do we do at this point? Do I have to call them directly, or just take the bow by the horns and do it myself, or what do you want?
Councilor Luce?
I believe Bruce knows the DOT member that's going to be in on the meeting, and he may be able to talk with him and maybe work something out with the director. I understand your concern. I will throw out the offer that if she is unwilling to meet with more than two people, you could take my place.
All right.
I just want to get the ball rolling.
Councilor Mokel, you had something else?
Since you added the basketball team, I was going to add the two wrestlers, and we also had the coaches.
Yeah, exactly.
Might as well round it out.
Yeah, 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 yes, that is very well, very well said. All right, anything else? All right, entertainer motion to adjourn to April first, twenty fourteen at seven PM, Councilor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn till April first at seven PM.
Thank you, sir, do we have a second?
Second.
Senator, Councilor Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed, passes unanimously, we are adjourned at nine seventeen.